All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, November 18, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Now I'll call the meeting into order, and as always, the first item this evening is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. And this evening, we have Pastor Andrew Williams of Rehoboth Baptist Church here. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the invitation. Please bow with me in prayer. God, thank you for this time that we can come together as a community. God, we pray, we ask that you meet with us here and give us wisdom. Lord, we live in a world and a country right now that we need to be unified. Please, God, guide us, guide our words and our thoughts and our actions tonight to unite us. God, thank you for sending your son to die for us. Continue to be with us in all that we say and we do, in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder from the county attorney.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interests, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Anything from the board? Your son. Yep. All right. There's nothing further. Move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda this evening? I have a motion for approval, please.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Take it.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next up is public comment. We have a full slate tonight, as always. The public is invited to come up and speak to the Board of Commissioners about any topic they would like to. We just asked that you limit your time to three minutes. When you're up here, you'll get the red light. Since we have a full slate of people this evening, I generally let people run a little long if we don't have a lot of people, but I'm going to hold you guys to that tonight just as a forewarning. First person up this evening is Ms. Dana Parker.
Good evening. My name is Dana Parker, 106 Hammock View Court. I've been a resident of Currituck for 26 years. I believe the school system sent you the zoning map as well as the school capacities via email. Again, I would like to thank each of you for your service to this county. I'm speaking tonight to clear up any misinformation. When I spoke at the last meeting, I discussed at the time of opening that Tolles Creek is projected to have 86 available seats. Commissioners and the public seemed surprised by that number, and even some questioned its validity. The information I shared was public information that has been published as part of the school redistricting plan. That plan took nearly a year to complete. It was carefully created to maximize bus efficiency and allow for future growth within the northern part of Moyoc as well as growth within Charburg. Our attendance plan is based on current approved development and residential projections through 2031. This is important because a $60 million school is a huge investment. As good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, we created a plan that could absorb previously planned development so that the taxpayer would not be burdened with another school project in the near future. Every new development is one step closer to another overcrowded school. Housing developments impact our schools. It impacts the number of custodians we need, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, school nurses, counselors, teacher assistants, speech therapists, school psychologists, secretaries, maintenance workers, plumbers, mechanics, and of course, our teachers. An increase to population has a domino effect on our schools. Many see the school system as a financial burden on our county. Let's use common sense. When population increases, the demand for services increase. An increase in services causes increased costs to the taxpayer. Together, we can control costs when we control population growth. Every new development adds pressure to our county's infrastructure, an infrastructure that often depends on volunteers and in other areas simply can't keep up. If you look at our current job listings, we have vacancies in social service, EMS, the public library, and the school system. Our county government struggles to pay its employees a competitive wage compared to other areas. Why, just why, are we adding an increased demand on services and making a current problem an even bigger one? Please deny this project. It can come before this board again in 365 days. That time will allow us to address our current needs and work to find solutions. Our school system is at a breaking point. We have numerous vacancies. We have substitutes teaching classes, custodians driving buses, students online on Chromebooks, just like we did during COVID as we tried to plug holes. We are drowning. Our staff is stressed to the max. Please stop the tidal wave of development long enough for the school system to come up for air. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up. Next up is Peggy Lusk. Good evening.
Good evening. I am Peggy Lusk. I live at 140B Street in Moyoc. My credentials are that I am a 40-year-plus resident. I've served on the Land Use Committee, Stormwater Commission, and Concerned Citizens Group for Moyoc. The reason I'm here tonight is that we have some of the same issues that have been present for the last 10 to 15 years. County infrastructure not keeping up with the developments approved by the commissioners. The existing residents' voices need to be heard regarding the need for an additional grocery store, traffic concerns, flooding in communities, density of houses, school overcrowding, waste management, emergency services, and a pharmacy. Some of these things just have been going on for a very long time. Some of them are being addressed, such as the pharmacy, but here again, we need to be cognizant of some of these things that have been just going on for years. Apartments will not add tax base to fund the public utilities needed to support more people, children, school situation, and traffic. 250 apartments, two cars per, is 500 cars at a minimum. High-density housing, garden apartments, does not add to building our community for the future. Commissioners, let Currituck infrastructure catch up to the existing needs of the citizens. Work on the commercial sewage plant to bring businesses that will bring tax-based income and jobs for local citizens. Listen to the people, especially those of us that have lived here for 40-plus years and have seen the outcome of mistakes being made by our elected officials in favor of builders and developers. Growth is inevitable, but should be done with citizen involvement, citizen safety, quality of life, and future vision, not with builders and developers having full reign of the land available and especially if it has been zoned previously. Enough mismanagement of Currituck County growth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, I'm going to guess you're Kathy. Come on up. How are you?
Kathy Maldus, 239 Greenview Road, Eagle Creek Development. I believe you may have had an email from me. I agree with everyone that has spoken before and at the last board meeting. My twist on it is the fact that I live in Eagle Creek, and you know what we've gone through. I can't keep repeating it. You've been there. You've helped us many times. We're not complete. We're not going to be complete in the water, Corotuck Sewer Water, for quite a while yet. We don't know what Florida is going to do to us. There's a lot of houses, bigger houses, more people. That water's going to come through to us. We just also received three pages from Corotuck Sewer Water. I don't know if any of you have looked at it. I will gladly show it to you, or you can look at it at a different time. It tells you they've done a wonderful job so far, but there's a long way to go, some of it even needing permits that they don't know how long will take. When it rains, we're still worried. When I hear a banging in my toilet, I've been very lucky I haven't had a problem. But you live with that fear still. I respectfully request that you wait on this project until Corotuck Sewer Water can be 100% and for a period of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, I have Todd Mitchell.
Todd Mitchell, 108 Chapman Lane, Moyoc, North Carolina. Also, before I get started, I gave a document to this nice lady up here. Just you guys may want to take a look at it. There might be a little something that needs to be looked at later on. So, good evening. I'm here again to speak on the interests and concerns regarding public safety and primarily fire and EMS. I listened last meeting as I spoke, and I feel that my words may have been mistaken. I've never said a negative comment about our volunteers, and truth be told, I believe I'm up here thinking of their safety first. However, when I sat down, I listened to some of the board members twist my words, but I did take one comment to heart, and I have begun the process of collecting that expert documentation and data that you should expect. I apologize for not having all of that documentation present to present to the board, but I am waiting for information from the state Fire Marshal's office as well as some others within the county. So, I would like to make sure that I have the most accurate data to present to this board and the citizens for thought and consideration. Something I did take the time to do was to meet with two of the three volunteer fire chiefs on my own time. I am waiting for a date to meet with the third. I also took the time to meet with some of the county's paid fire and EMS crews at Knott's Island. Additionally, I have spoken many times with Mike Williams from the North Carolina State Fire Marshal's Office and have learned far more than I ever wanted to know about contracts between the county and volunteers, let's see, which the volunteers have no input on, documentation and nondocumentation when it comes to reporting based upon a volunteer fire system, dual titles, budgets, the leasing of new trucks, and the 2012-2013 survey, EMS fire survey that was paid for by the county. And I believe it probably points out some of the things that we're actually running into at this very point right now. Now, I truly believe some of you may not be fully briefed or provided information about the past or the present, so instead of coming up here with inaccurate assumption or blame, my plan is to go through the proper channels and bring my findings to your appointed fire and EMS advisory board and attempt to be a positive and factual voice for our volunteers as well as the citizens. There are four pieces of important data that I'd like to bring. The volunteers have and continue to save this county millions of dollars, millions of dollars, and that number continues to grow. In 2025, I believe it was a cost of about $25 million to turn it into a paid fire service at that time. Now, undoubtedly, we all have to agree, it's probably increased, probably doubled at that point. I also know about the 8 cent for Corolla and the 9 cent for Knott's Island, that they pay additionally for fire service, and we all know that that doesn't cover. You guys are picking up the slack of that, and I appreciate that. There's a big one, and that's CFR 19110.156. It is the new OSHA standard that talks about the umbrella of public safety. If that passes, it is going to cause big impacts on not just us nationally when it comes to fire EMS. I cannot really speak for the police. And lastly, the citizens, they need to know the impacts regarding the day that the county offers the volunteers a contract that they can no longer fulfill. The county at that point will by law be provided to provide fire coverage for its citizens, and when that happens, 6 cent will not be what we're sitting up here talking about. It will be a 30 to 35 cent tax increase to fill those positions. Again, I thank you for your time. Let me sit up here and speak, and I look forward to working with you guys through your appointed board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Susan Powers.
Hey, how are you?
Good evening.
My name is Susan Powers. I live at 251 Greenview Road in Eagle Creek. As I said before, I do think that we do need apartments in Corotuck County. I didn't realize. I knew we only have one Wild Geese apartment down at Paul's Point, so if you wanted an apartment in Corotuck County, you're kind of out of luck.
It's actually two. There's one in Grandy, too.
There's actually, well, there's technically four.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I know my neighbor mentioned sewage. I know I've emailed you some documents and the updates and stuff. There have been improvements in our sewage system. We do get an email every day from Environmental Link about how many leaks we've had in our neighborhood, which is kind of the beginning of a problem. Since February of 2022, we've had 671 leaks. It did start out in 80, 60, 50. It's dwindled down to three or four a month, which shows you they're going in the right Let's see here. I did have further communication with Dave and May about that pump and haul permit and about lifting it. I don't know if I read this before, but he said that they're going to need to, the upgrades are needed to be certified by a professional engineer. There needs to be documentation that the wastewater producing is producing reclaimed water, and once requirements have been satisfied, considering the lifting moratorium, the process will likely proceed quickly. He didn't have a timeframe for this. I've been talking about Eagle Creek CWS since 2021 at least. I don't know if it's going to take another three years for all this to get fixed and resolved. I hope not. It could be two months from now. It could be three years from now. And I did also touch base with Michael Myers, who is involved in Eagle, in Environmental Link and Corotuck Water and Sewage. They are working on returning the effluent back to Foss. They need a hydrologist report. I'm out of time. I'm going to keep talking.
Got a little bit.
Okay. And according to him, that the Eagle Creek Sewage Treatment Plant does have enough capacity to treat everything coming from Foss. It's just that right now, as you know, it's under moratorium, is not allowed to treat the extra water. And also, too, one of the things I wanted to mention, it's my understanding that new shopping center, if it's approved, would also tie into Eagle Creek Sewage and would not be tied up into Moyoc Sewage Treatment Plant, which is another concern for another So, I ask for you to not approve this because I don't feel that we're close enough to having our issues resolved that we could add these apartments. And I know he can come back in 365 days, and hopefully in 365 days, I'll stand here in front of you, say Eagle Creek's humming and hopping, and please approve them. So, any questions for me?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next up, I have Mr. Michael Hall.
Good evening, Mike. It's been a minute since you've been up here.
Just a little bit. My name is Michael Hall. I live at 121 Brumsey Landing in Moyoc. We're not getting a grocery store. Let's get real here, folks. Let's get real at that location. It isn't going to happen, and I'll tell you why. I was part of the pre-2013 Small Area Plan, and we were told by the county at that moment, both the county manager, the county attorney, the county planning person, you know, and everybody else, including the commissioner who was assigned to our group. And we spent 18 months, not the normal six to nine months, they said, going through stuff. Reason why, they said, we're not going to do it is because it is not suitable for commercial or residential. Point blank said to us. If we wanted, we wanted to extend water and sewer to that area. We were told it wasn't going to happen, the county wasn't going to do it because of those reasons. Everything would be standalone, commercial and residential, on their own septic, their own water. Now, let's look a little bit farther. Couple of other times now, in the past few years, we've had a where we're going to have commercial property mixed in with residential. Well, it didn't happen because they came back and said it wasn't suitable at this time, so guess what happened? We made it all residential. You're looking to do it again here, folks. Okay? So, this has happened. We keep letting it happen. Then I used to hear always, we need rooftops, 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 rooftops. That was by the county manager and a bunch of other people. Well, let's look at Commissioner Payment. He asked a very important question last month. What is the right number of rooftops to get our grocery store? And they said, we don't know. Then the question was, well, is it one? Is it 1,000? We don't know. So, again, we have these people that are supposed to be the experts who tell us we don't know what the number is. Well, let's again look at some more things. The rent. If this is supposed to be affordable, the people were staying here from Redknot and said, well, how much is the rent up there? We don't know. How much is the rent up here? I don't know. These are the experts that are supposed to. If they're the people running Redknot, and they can't tell you we want Redknot charges, that's pretty bad. I wouldn't want to say it either because the Loch Ness Monster, the Mid-County Currituck Bridge, and this grocery store at that location aren't going to happen, at least not right now. You look at Eagle Creek. When they decided they wanted to do Eagle Creek, the sewer system, and build these extra houses, they said, well, as soon as we can build these houses, it'll be feasible for us to fix Eagle Creek. Not let's fix Eagle Creek first. It'll be feasible then. Now, you're talking about adding these other things to it. It's wrong again, folks. We haven't fixed Eagle Creek. We need to fix that before we move on and build more houses. Then you feel like, if you want to take and say, hey, we need more units there, well, behind Moyoc Elementary School, there's some two-bedroom apartments or houses right there. That's better than these apartments. Put those there. Not the 252, but let's go to the 65, which was their number. Let's go down here, folks. It isn't going to happen. They're not going to put the grocery store there either, folks, because they don't have the numbers and no one knows what the numbers are. And they're not lying to us because they're just flat out not answering the question. So, if you want to continue to keep looking at it, put this off for a year, like I said, let us have a chance to look at it and say, is Eagle Creek being halfway fixed? Are we getting our schools right? Let's get everything right first. Adding more houses at this time is not feasible, and it's a very dangerous thing to happen. Thank you.
Next up, I have Robin Berry.
How are you?
Good evening. I'm Robin Berry, and I reside at 115 Bass Street in Moyoc, North Carolina. County Board of Commissioners, as a resident of Corotuck for over 25 years, I am very much opposed to seeing more rooftops with a proposal of over 250 apartments. High-density housing increases crime, major traffic issues, and strains public safety. Not to mention, there will not be enough taxes to cover necessary expenses, and so the burden will fall on us residents of Corotuck. I am not a resident of Foss, but what about them? I have met and talked with several people who do live there, and they do not want the apartments beside their homes that they paid $300,000 to $400,000 for. Additionally, they are supposed to get a pool, and the proposed apartments will receive a pool before the homeowners will, if approved. If these homeowners had any idea that the apartments would be built beside them, they wouldn't have purchased a home in Foss. Foss residents have no idea that a roundabout was possibly going in at the entrance because of the amount of traffic in that one neighborhood. With the apartments, there would be an additional 500-plus vehicles in the Foss neighborhood. The traffic in the summertime is already horrendous and would cause more congestion on the main highway. Also, in my opinion, and I saw right in town of Moyoc on the main highway. I understand that some people do want affordable apartments, but these apartments will not be affordable to the young adults, the teachers, and the first responders. For a one-bedroom, these apartments will cost somewhere between $1,500 to $1,800 a month. I have inquired regarding the exact cost, however, suspiciously, it will not be disclosed. I know many teachers here in Corotuck, and they have told me that at that rate, they would not be able to afford them. If we absolutely need apartments, build them off the beaten path somewhere in the lower area of Corotuck, as Moyoc is busting at the seams with a grocery store that can't keep enough stock on the shelves in schools at or nearing capacity. We have been promised another grocery store on more than one occasion, only to be let down again. The BOC has stated that they do not make promises, yet I ask you, I ask you to reflect on the reason. The BOC originally approved the land to be rezoned as commercial. The local food line cannot and does not sustain the people we have now. I suspect that the north end of Corotuck will not see another grocery store, even if the apartments are built, as the developer will likely have gotten by the BOC with another bait and switch. As a reminder, the same BOC denied requests by the same developer to put 410 units on the combined tracks in 2021. What has changed? I do not believe the rooftops are a reason for not getting a grocery store, but rather a lack of sewage septic. A very close friend of mine, who is a chef, has investigated Moyoc to open up a restaurant when the property was approved for commercial use and soliciting for businesses. She inquired about opening a restaurant on two different parcels of land, this one being one of them, and was only to be told no multiple times due to the septic not being able to support it. How exactly can this land, all of a sudden, support over 250 apartments? In summary, this parcel of land is zoned commercial and should stay commercial. I'm not sure how many people took the time to send emails or call our county commissioners, but I do know that hundreds, if not thousands, of people have vented and expressed their concern about not wanting these apartments on social media and several local events I have attended and supported, just because residents have been busy or lost trust in our county commissioners to take the time to email each and every one of you. I know that you have seen what the citizens of Corotuck have voiced about these apartments. Please show them that you have listened and that you genuinely care and respect the needs of Corotuck residents. You have an opportunity here to restore much-needed trust between the community and the BOC. As you vote on this proposal, please consider not only the citizens' wants, but also their needs. I am certain the majority of residents do not want to see apartments. These apartments will not pay enough taxes to cover school, public safety, and general government expenses, yet again, increasing residents' taxes to cover the expenses. Finally, please consider the current residents of Foss and what they were promised, the traffic concerns, the affordability of these units, the previous decision of the BOC regarding this parcel of land, sewage septic issues, and the glaring conflict of interest amongst a board member in this parcel of land. Please stop making our county a developer's paradise.
Ms. Robin, I need you to wrap it up, please. You're way over your time. Okay?
My last line. Stop making our county a developer's paradise with nothing to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Phil Scott.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not a face that you see down here a lot, but when you see me.
I need your address, sir.
Okay. 544 South Mills Road.
Thank you.
But when you do see me, I got something to say. So, I'm not in here in your hair all the time and in your business, but this is a bad fit for Moyoc, and you know it is. I've heard, oh, our hands are tied. I've heard that so many times. For 20 years, we've talked about, we got up here, and I've heard them say, oh, the thing they had before was, how many students this is going to be? It's not going to cause a problem. This is not going to cause, we got ample opportunity, you know, we can do it. We can do it. And here we are today. And your hands are tied. I understand, I'm a businessman. I've had a business in this county for 38 years. I write the paychecks. The buck stops here. So, I understand I am an entrepreneur and a capitalist, and I believe... So I understand, I'm a, I am a entrepreneur and a capitalist, and I believe people that own land have property rights. So we get all that. They can do what they want. We've seen this county go from a blinking red light at the Eagle Market to, I don't know how many lights we got up and down the highway now, but it seats five or six. And there's going to be a new one at this track, and the people in ranchland have been waiting one for one for years, that's a dangerous intersection. And then there's going to be one up by the 7-Eleven at Baxter Lane where all that stuff comes in and out. We've been hearing the last, I think it's three times, they've, they've had construction in Moyoc, they've hit this gas line. And I don't know if any of y'all have come through that.
Yep.
It stopped. And so if we keep adding residents to the county, what do you think's going to happen? And I get that your hands are tied in some ways, but here's how you say no. We need to revisit the UDO first thing. Needs to be one unit per acre, simple. That'll stop it right there, most of it. And we still have builders. The problem we've had is over the last 20 to 25 years, they have took every parcel of land from the north, from the North Line of Virginia line, all the way to the bridge going over to Kitty Hawk, and they put commercial zoning on both sides of the highway. Now what does that mean? That means a man like me that's a cabinet maker, and I want to have a business, it's economically not feasible to buy a million-dollar piece of land, they'd say it's worth that, and run a business out of it. Some people have been grandfathered in for years. But just like the young lady was just selling at a restaurant, number one, especially in Moyoc, you go to the south end of the county, it's a little different, but the soils will not support the septic systems. And they've tried, they built this one in Eagle Creek, bad idea, we're stuck with it now. We've seen what happened. So I'm here tonight to say, we have to have a little forethought. My idea, and we're not no smarter than our grandparents, what did they used to do? Teachers didn't have a place to live, the young, you know, we had teacherages, we had one in Moyoc, the one currently here at NAP School is being used for the administrative building. What's wrong with that idea? If a teacher can't afford to live here and teach school, why can't, when we building these schools with all these fancy things, and I get to all the codes and everything the state wants you to do, it's when they give you the money, they tell you how to do it. I get it. Why can't we build a teacherage next to these schools? And matter of fact, it's in your hands, why can't we give discounts for firefighters and policemen that live in our county on their property taxes? That's y'all, y'all can do that tomorrow.
No, we can't.
Yes, you can.
That's illegal.
State statute.
A state statute. Well, you know what you need to do? I get sick of hearing that. You need to get Bobby Hennig on the phone and tell him, we got a problem here, and that's his job, and he needs to get up there in Raleigh and help us. I've heard the same thing about all the money they take off the beach, oh, we can't use it for that. Well, why? Well, the state says so. But why don't this county and all the other counties, all the way down to Wilmington, to Brunswick, get together and tell Raleigh what they want to do? Raleigh wants to take that money and keep it, don't send it back. That's the problem. The money's taken. We are not, we are not undertaxed. People have had tax increases on their property? Oh, it's COVID. Their insurances have gone up, automobile, house insurance? We've had to deal with it, y'all need to deal with it.
All right.
Don't pass a buck.
I need you to wrap up, if you could, for me, please.
Okay, you don't like what I say, but that's fine.
No, we're being respectful of people's time.
Deal with it, this is your job.
Okay.
You call Bobby Hennig or you call who you need to do, and you tell them to work with us. And call Brunswick County all the way down. Hyde, Dare, all of these counties on the coast that collect this money. We, look, tourists use this highway, why can't we use some of that money for the fire and police?
Mr. Scott, you have a three-minute time limit. I've allowed you plenty of time to get me well past it.
All right, I'll be back. I don't come in here a lot.
I get it.
But this is my turn, and I'm shooting for bear today, I'm loaded.
I understand.
Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Denise Hall?
I'm Denise Hall. I live at 121 Brumsey Landing Road. I don't think I can add much other than to ask, excuse me, other than to ask why we can't slow down until our utilities and our infrastructure catches up. Camden County had a moratorium on building, why can't Currituck do that? And I, and I understand that this is not one of those where you have to do it. This isn't a, our hands are tied, we have to do it. This is a decision that you make, not based on the law, not based on what I've been told in the past. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. All right. Next up, I have Pam McMahon. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Pam McMahon. I live at 106 West Canvas Back Drive in Bill's Island, Currituck. I've been a resident of this county for 43 years, spent many years before that with friends here in Endear County growing up. So I've known this county for a long, long time, the Tulane Highway. I'm 100% opposed to rezoning for more housing or apartments of any kind. The schools are full, the new school's going to be almost full, even before these apartments. The grocery stores don't keep up with the, with, with the growth, and the infrastructure is not in place to accommodate this. There were actually more grocery stores here in the 80s than there are now. If you remember, we had Eagle Creek, I mean Eagle Creek, Eagle Supermarket in Harbinger, one in Moyoc, we had Sammy Walker, and we had a lot of mom and pop little grocery places.
Grandy's supermarket.
Was that?
The Grandy's supermarket.
Yes, Grandy's supermarket. There were more grocery stores in the 80s than we have now. The developers come in, and it seems like they're allowed carte blanche, to come in and do what they want to do here. They bring in their experts, the experts have no interest in this county, the experts are normally paid by whoever these developers are, because they're the engineers and whatever. So there, there's a financial interest there as well. But they come in, they promise the moon, they change their minds, they rape the land, and they leave us with drainage issues and a house, housing that a cat, three or more would take down. I don't, maybe engineers, people that are a lot smarter than me, put up those, are okay those apartments that are there now, but I swear, they went up so fast, I, I can't see them withstand a major hurricane coming through. We've been told that the growth could not be contained because you had to abide by the state's UDO, but I think I see that the UDO is going to be amended on the future agenda. Is that correct?
Not, not this evening.
Not today? I'm talking about at another point.
It, it, it's constantly being revised, so you'll see lots of little technical corrections coming through.
It was up for UDO amendments. Our taxes have gone from probably like, what, 46 to 62 in like, three years. We have another one on the way. What happens when our next property assessment comes along and everybody's property's worth more, the taxes go back up? I'm a senior citizen in this county, and, and things aren't getting any cheaper for anybody, but not for this, for people on fixed incomes, it's, it's not at all. Many of the 20 to 35-year-olds that were raised in this county cannot afford to live here. They can't live on their own, they're either with their parents or they're outside of this county. They can't come back here and work, they don't make the money here that they would make at another, in another area to support 2,000, $200 a month rent somewhere. I urge you to listen to the citizens of Currituck and not the developers. I really am tired of hearing the same old, our hands are tied. I'm sure there are many rules, guidelines, red plate, red tape, and plain old bureaucracy that hinder the board, but something needs to change. If laws need to be changed to stop the growth, then get to work and do that. We elected you and gave you the sacred responsibility to serve and protect this community, and quite frankly, right now, many of us feel that with some of you, we are very wrong.
Next, I have Darcy Messina. Yes, sorry, Darcy. Sorry, Darcy. I'll yell louder next time for you. I won't be able to do it again.
Darcy Messina, 101, White Hair and Drive, Currituck, North Carolina. I concur with everything. I mean, there's not much I can add to it, but what I can add to it is that every one of y'all have sat up there and told us that you didn't approve it, this was all done by previous boards, this rezoning, this, y'all are responsible for two of the largest communities that have been rezoned in the, in, in the county, and now you're going to add to it. And I'm just coming forward to ask you not to do it, it's not a time to do this, and we don't need this.
Thank you. All right. Lastly, I have Mr. John Snowden signed up this evening.
Get the plate of boost in.
Yes, sir. Get the.
Almost didn't make it.
Man a few words.
John, John Snowden, 112 Maple Road, 194 Maple Road, too. Once again, Farmer John, I grow food and flowers, I don't grow houses. Houses are not economically sustainable for the taxpayers of Currituck. Some of you have called me the social media Facebook warrior. I'll wear that title proudly, thanks to all 3,260 people who wrote my name in on the ballot. Thank you, Kevin McCord, thank you, Chairman, for pushing me to do that back in August of 2023. You will see me again. Next time, you better kill me. You will not ruin me. I am stronger for what I went through. I can't add a lot to what you've heard. I've been your best proponent of getting these meetings out on Facebook. As you all know, rezoning is a political decision. This is not quasi-judicial. You do not have your hands tied. You can vote no tonight without any recourse of legal action by the developer slash applicant. Rezoning is a political decision. A special use permit or a conditional use permit is a quasi-judicial hearing where we cannot speak. As layman, you require expert testimony. Approval of this request and subsequent development of 252 apartments would put the total dwelling units of the floor tract at 520 plus. I will remind you that in 2021, the same board, the very same sitting board, it's not a prior, previous board, denied a request by the same developer to put 410 units on this property, so now you're going to go to 4, 520. In her presentation at the end of October meeting, the spokesperson for the developer continuously referred to the proposed grocery store as a intensive use. Her statement is laughable. A grocery store or any other commercial use there would generate tax revenue, property sales, jobs, and place lower demand on public safety, schools, and other county services. 252 apartments. Do you want to fill up a school? That's how you fill up a school. And where will we be when that school's finished and the developer's gone? The taxpayers of Currituck County will be paying for the developer's profit. I run a business at the corner of Maple Road, I sell ice, fruit, and produce. If my business cost every citizen in this county $300 increase in their tax, you'd have Bill and the planning department down to shut me down. How can you let a business operate in this county and approve requests? I see the red light, I'll be fixed in a minute.
You're good, I'll give you a few minutes.
How can you let someone approve, approve a request for a rezoning that will cause everybody's taxes to go up? I'm going to close this out, that a grocery store is not an intensive use, apartments are intensive uses. Everybody else has said stuff, we just can't keep doing this, and tonight, we are not Republicans and Democrats in this room, we are neighbors. We are Currituck. You work for us for at least one more night, right?
Two more, one and a half.
Adios, amigo. That's it. Vote no. You can do it. Remember, we are Currituck.
All right. Thank you, John. All right. With that, I will close public comment. Do we need a break before we jump into anything else? Okay?
Let's just plug on.
All right. Next up, we have Commissioners' Report, so I'll start with you this evening, Mike. What's on your mind?
Just to let everybody know, I went to the, the, the rodeo last weekend, very good success again, sold out, tons of people. The weather was a little windy and cold, heard a lot of the, I guess, the cow people, the boys or whatever, just complaining about the, the wind out there, but great time. I'm glad the county can, can pull this together, thanks to Tamara and her crew and staff out there. I talked to a lot of people out there, they're very happy, they really enjoyed it. Good, good event for everyone involved, so if you ever get a chance to go to one, it is a good event, it's, it's fun. And just, again, thanks on that. And again, with the fire departments, yeah, I mean, volunteers is where it's always been. I mean, it's gone from back in the day, you had the farmer out there in the tractor, he'd get a pager would go off, he'd have to come and run and get up to the fire station as fast as he could, and when I was active in, in Grandy Station, more often, you know, I'd wear my pager, nighttime, whatever goes off, you get there as fast as you can, so. Support your volunteers as, as best you can. They're always willing to let you come in and tour the facility. You know, if you can just go out there and hold a flag or help set out cones or help direct traffic, they would appreciate that. You don't need to get involved in fighting fires or, but if you want to, there's, there's free training for that. And the volunteers are getting harder because people are working, working longer distance, and it is hard to keep a volunteer, but we do support that. I know I support it, and I think this board does too, so just remember them and the first responders, it's getting busy, fire season is here, we've had fires, I mean, it's just, this is chimney fires are going to start picking up, so just want everybody to be careful and safe out there, and the holidays are coming up, so be careful traveling, and the roads are still terrible out there, and that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Kitty, how about you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eight years ago, I had the honor of standing before the people of Currituck County and take my oath of office for the county commissioner's seat at large. I placed my hand on the Bible and swore that I would support the Constitution of the United States. Yes, one of the greatest documents ever written starts with "we, the people." It did not start with Kitty Etheridge or Bob White or Selena Jarvis or any of us, it started with "we, the people." I hope as I vacate my seat, that it can be said of me that I tried my best to do the will of the people. That is something a public servant sometimes easily forgets. Eight years ago, I gave this advice to the other new commissioners. Number one, don't worry about getting reelected, just do the will of the people. And number two, don't get a big head, we're here to serve, not to be served. I would also like to give that, that advice to the new commissioners who would take their oath of office at the December meeting. In eight years, there's been a lot of things I'm proud of and a lot of things I'm not proud of. Becoming a commissioner, I want Currituck County to require one-acre lots, individual septic systems, and not being able to build your lot up higher where the runoff would affect your neighbor. I think this would have preserved the Currituck County that I love. I think anyone riding through our county can see the changes in our landscape, and I'm most proud that I did not vote to drastically change the Currituck I love. Our new commissioners have all stated that they want to control growth in our county. Folks, hold them to this, or in another eight years, you will not be able to tell the difference between Currituck or Chesapeake. Again, thank you for allowing me one of the greatest honors of my life, representing the great people of Currituck County. I love our great heritage, our rich farmlands with our farmers' family markets, our beautiful beaches and our waterways, our swamps and our forests, but most of all, I love the people who make Currituck County great. Thanks again for the opportunity to be your county commissioner, and God bless Currituck County.
Ms. Selena, you going to be able to follow that up?
Yep. I, I hope to have my say about how much this board has meant. This is the only board I've ever known. I was appointed to this position almost six years ago in January of 2019, and this is the last time we'll be together as a board, and it's not been easy. We've had our ups- easy. We've had our ups and downs. We've had our disagreements publicly and privately. And I especially will miss my friend Kitty Etheridge, who not only has given me advice, she's encouraged me to do things I never thought I would be able to. I'm going to stop there now, or I won't get through rest. I would like to thank the 14,000-plus voters that took the time to bubble my name in. I know you did not have to do that. I appreciate it. And I promise you, in these four years, I will continue to answer emails, 73 at the last count for this issue alone that's on the agenda tonight. I will answer my phone. And if I can't answer my phone, I will call you back. I will be responsive to you for the next four years, I promise. And most importantly, I will listen. And I promise you, I will take what the citizens want, and if I can, I will follow your wishes. My hands are not tied tonight, and many of you know that. And it is my hope we will follow the will of the people. And finally, our inaugural opioid advisory board finally met last Thursday. It's been a long time coming. I could not be more proud of the group we have assembled. The opioid epidemic is real, and if you don't know that, then you must be living in a cave. It is heartbreaking. It is overwhelming at times. It is pervasive. No income group, no county, no city, no area of our country is untouched by this. And I believe this group is going to do as much good for our county as we can. To use the phrase of Burke County Commissioner Johnny Carswell, who lost a son to the opioid epidemic, we must do that one more thing to stop this epidemic from occurring around us. And I want to thank all the members of this committee and this advisory board that have agreed to serve. We are going to do great things. Thank you.
Thank you. Owen, you got anything for us this evening?
Now that the telephone calls and the mailers that you get for elections is over with, hopefully with the results of the election, there's a new sense of renewal in our country. And I hope that people will take that to heart. I will reiterate what Selena and Kitty said. This has been a good board. We have had our differences, but in the end, I can tell you that every single member of this board has done what they thought is best for the people of Currituck County. And regardless of what is said, nobody's on the tank. Nobody is corrupt on this board. And I have enjoyed working with them, and I've worked with other boards. But this has been a good board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kevin?
All right. First off, yeah, put the timer on. Congrats to Selena. Selena, I bubbled your name in, so congrats. But no, congrats to everybody that ran. Congrats for the ones that won, obviously. And if somebody didn't, I mean, I give them props to put their name out there, because you take beatings on social media. You take beatings on other stuff. But like I said, at least you have the, I'm not going to say stones, but we'll say the guts to put their name on the dotted line, because it takes a lot. And they'll attack you. They'll attack your family. They'll attack maybe your aunts or somebody. But like I said, if you ran, good for you. If you won, good for you. And like you said, it takes thick skin to do this job. My law enforcement job is nothing compared to this. Nothing. It's like eating cheesecake. Speaking of, like Mike said about the fire departments, like when stuff happens, like them hitting the line up there today, emergency management, sheriff's office, yeah, again, NC DOT, you know, they're putting in internet, whatever, to provide more services, you know, and they hit stuff. And it happens. And I mean, some of it might be marked improperly. My company did a job at Fellowship Baptist Church. We hit the internet line, and we were six feet from it. I mean, like literally a shovel and a half, digging with shovels and hit two spots on the internet line. So it, and I'm not saying 811 marked everything wrong, whatever, but like, it happens. But we get through it. Just like I said, so thanks to the fire department guys, hop right out there the last time and this time. We even had highway patrol. You know, we usually have one trooper a day, so it's cool. And we get a little bit of help, the sheriff's office. But everybody jumps in and helps. So thanks for them. Speaking of schools and like school safety, somebody put something on, and I love when people put positive stuff on social media. Somebody put something the other day about like rapid deployment. They were talking about like school safety. We have five rapid deployment instructors at the sheriff's office that train every school every year. And the reason being is because like you might get new teachers every year. You might get new whatever. So the teachers are individually trained about safety drills. And like last week, we did lockdowns at three schools. Obviously, we have 10 schools in the county, so we have the rest of them are this week. But like I said, with law enforcement, and we have our own rapid deployment training all week this week at Academy. But with law enforcement and, you know, everything, like, we're very active. There's an SRO at every school. So I mean, your response time is zero, because somebody is there 24/7 to protect the kids and the teachers and the staff and the school. And that's what it's all about, because we do live in a great place. Nothing's perfect. The other thing I wanted to say, there was a couple more things. I did say the Christmas parade is Friday, the 6th. The tree lightens at 6:00 PM. The parade starts at 7:00. We have some awesome floats. Every year it grows. Every year, the floats get better. So like I said, if you want to attend that, you can reach out to the Cooperative Extension, to Sheila Gregory, Cameron Lowe, or myself. The parade is brought to you by the Cooperative Extension of North Carolina, Curritucks, and the Currituck FOP. So my emails are out there. My cell phone's out there. I also would like to thank all the people that called. We do read your emails. I replied to a few of them. Some of them I saw other people reply to. But, you know, I had phone calls for pros. I had phone calls for negatives. And I had good debates with different people on, you know, different housing in the county and so forth. But like I said, and I'm going to just rip the Band-Aid off. There was a couple where my name gets put in there. I am the most, hands down, ethical person in this county. And if somebody wants to come to my house, you can set an appointment. You can look at my QuickBooks. I disclose who I do work for. I disclose who I don't do work for. You know, I disclose that I worked at Morris Farm 30 years ago. I'm not a dishonest person. I've had, you know, I mean, and when I read those emails, I mean, I just, but you know what? That's why I have thick skin. You just smile. I know who I am. I know who my parents raised. So, but like I said, people are entitled to their opinions. You know, and that's that. But like I said, the bulls and barbecue, I did see Commissioner payment. I thought I was going to have to tase him, because he was getting back in. He had already had his ticket, but he was getting back in. He cut through a little area that I had to seal off where, and Mike said they were going to have an event where they had to chase, the bulls chased the commissioners. Me and him were the only two out there. And I said, I'm pretty sure I can beat Mike. But if not, I had a weapon with me, and I could shoot at either Mike or the bull. No, I'm just kidding. But no, it was the bulls and barbecue, the tourism. Man, we have so much great stuff here in the county. Like I said, the bulls and barbecue, and it's 15 bucks to go to the event. I mean, how cheap is that to go to a rodeo? There was great food out there. I mean, it was just, it was a really, really, that is like probably the best event that we have in the county.
I'm just glad nobody saw me ride the bull out there, because that was all.
Yeah. Michael Lee last, they had an eight-year-old kid this year that rode the bull, that rode a bull. And it was a pretty decent-sized bull. And he was, Mike, you were there. He was probably on it for about 20 seconds. And that's, I mean, that's a tough kid, eight years old to ride a bull. But like I said, the barrel racing, the mutton busting, I love it when you see the little three-year-olds and four- or five-year-olds holding a sheep running across the thing. It's just, it's an awesome event. So like I said, if you didn't go to it, it's usually the first November of every month. The Christmas parade's the first Friday of every month. It's just, it's comparable to anybody else's. So please feel free to attend. Every year it grows, just kind of like everything. But thank you. And I think I hit all my high points.
Covered a lot of points.
Covered it all. And good luck to the guys that were leaving. Thank you for their service. Beaumont, Commissioner White, Commissioner Kitty Etheridge, they've done a good job. And like I said, even though we've argued and had bumps in the road, we, you know, we get through it. And that's what adults and grownups should do. But thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, I want to say it was Owen's fault. Owen first appointed me to the Board of Adjustments and hence launched my engagement and involvement with Currituck County. I served on that board for seven years, followed up by the FIAB for two, and then found myself running for the county commissioner's seat. I, too, was appointed and have served almost 11 years when I come off this board. And I can tell you, just like Kitty said, it has been an honor to serve Currituck County. I first swore allegiance to support and defend the Constitution of the United States in 1979. There is nowhere in when we took that oath that says until some point in the future. I have worked my entire professional career to do the same, and that is to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. It has been a wonderful time on the Board of Commissioners. I know folks will say that we work for them. There's an aspect of that that's true, but the reality is, I consider myself a statesman and not a politician. And many people do not understand what the difference is. A politician typically does things to get reelected or at the, you know, pleasure of the people. A statesman does what they believe is best for the county. And I can assure each and every member of the gallery, those that are watching on TV, my fellow commissioners, I put thought and consideration into every single decision that I've made. Probably the best compliment I've ever been paid in my years of service is that I didn't agree with your decision, but I understand why you made it. And as long as we can have a discussion about the issues, I'm all in. I have no problems discussing why I do things that I do. But it's been, it's been quite an experience. Probably my greatest appreciation and my greatest proponent and my favorite constituent in the county is my wife, Christine. And I thank you that for all of these years, you all think you got it bad. When you come to this meeting, I get daily debriefs, what about this? And I give her a huge amount of credit, because I'm just a guy, right? And unfortunately, the cretin title comes along with those aspects. My wife has far more compassion for the issues at hand and how that impacts not only, you know, our family, but your family and your neighbor's family and all of that as well. And so I just want to thank, thank you, Christine, because without you, this would have been, yeah, let's just say ugly. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And thank you for the fellow members of this board. It has been a pleasure to serve with you. And the one thing I'd tell everyone is when the entire Board of Commissioners is consistently saying the same thing, the same answers, the same yays and the same nays, we're being paid a disservice. There is health. There is safety in intellectual debate and discussing the issues. And, you know, if it's an all yes board, somebody's not asking the right questions. And that's when you, the people, need to start asking questions. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. I'll wrap this up this evening. I just want to say, Ms. Kitty, you mentioned when we came on this board, you, Bobby, Mike Hall, since the audience was on the board at the time, public comment was at the end of the meeting. It was this group of commissioners that actually moved public comment back to the beginning of the meeting so that you could have your say before the meeting, not after the meeting. So we have listened on occasion to some people out there. And we started out with our very first meeting rocky, with just the election of the chairman. And at that time, we had a newly-minted commissioner, now State Senator Bobby Hanig, up here and plopped him right in with no experience whatsoever and just said, damn the torpedoes, let's go. That turned out to work out okay. Obviously, he went on to bigger and better things. I want to take a moment, since we have a captive audience, and, you know, we are a creature of the state. And by that, we are a corporate body politic. We are granted powers through the state. So when they tell us what we can do and not do, when we say that, it actually means something. There are times that we have our hands tied, as many people mentioned. Tonight is not one of those occasions. But when we do a special use permit up here, and that was mentioned by John Snowden, that is a quasi judicial, and I've said it many times, we have to sit here as, in judgment, basically, as sort of a board of judges and listen to stuff that's presented to us. Those of you that come here often know that. Those of you that don't, you know, I'm taking this moment to educate you as to why our hands are tied from time to time. I will say again to John Snowden and to the others that ran, and I did say, put your money where your mouth is, as Kevin has many times, jump in the fray and see if you can do better. So thank you to those that did do that and put theirself out there for scorn, abuse, ridicule, or praise, depending on which way it went. It is not an easy thing to do. It is a time commitment that most can't even begin to understand what it takes just to run for office. I put almost 8,000 miles on my vehicle the first year I ran for office to get elected, knocking on doors. Of course, when you live in the 4x4 in Corolla, it takes a little bit longer to get around to get over here. So probably a little bit more than most. I do want to say thank you to Ms. Susan Powers. She has come up here many times and talked to us. It has always been cordial, always been informative. She comes to the work sessions from time to time. She comes to the budget sessions and has just been involved and is an example of the ways that people can get involved and make a difference and talk to us. We are available. If you come into a work session, those are for us to work out stuff. But afterwards, you can talk to us and ask questions. Mr. Todd Mitchell that came up this evening to talk about fire and EMS services, I would say to him, I believe he left the room, that he could get with the chairman or the manager if he has, if you have information and compile this data for us to see. There's no reason that a regular citizen couldn't request a work session with the Board of Commissioners. I have done that as a horse tour operator before I became elected. We came in to talk to the board, to talk about making some changes. Ultimately, nothing came out of it. But we sat down with the Board of Commissioners. I believe you were here at the time, freshly minted. So there is no reason that if you have something that is important as that and some data that you think is compelling that we need to be made aware of, you can request that and come and maybe sit down with us and really work through that. So just keep that in mind, folks, if you're out there and you have something that is extremely important. Lastly, I do want to tackle Ms. Dana. Thank you for coming up again. I think she took off as well. Tolls Creek Elementary School. She said they're going to have, it's going to be at 89% capacity when it opens, basically. The other side of that coin is, Mayock Elementary is only going to be at about 60% capacity or a little over that at the same time. The kids are going to be, it's right here, scenario right here, so it's not wrong. This is from the school. They sent us the information. They did a great job, by the way, of canvassing parents and people to gain information about what they wanted to see. That school is going to be at about 62%. There is some logic behind it, and there is a reason that Tolls Creek Elementary is going to be almost full. We have Mayock Elementary, as most everyone knows, we did a rather extensive renovation in addition to that building. In doing that and looking at the structural integrity of the building, the old portion of the building needs some love. We can now move most of the students into the new building in a few years, or the school board can, to make those changes that are necessary to the old school. That building is 100 years old. It needs a little love. So this allows that to happen. And of course, there may be economies of scales and other things that happen. And I understand moving kids around, not splitting up neighborhoods. There's a host of reasons why that school will be close to capacity when it opens. However, those lines can be shifted in the future. And at 800 students, it's not at capacity. It's at its current capacity. It was designed to go more than that, and we built it a core to handle adding on as time went on, rather than building a new 50 or 60 million dollar school. So I just want to be clear that we're not going to be out of schoolroom in the area. Shawboro Elementary will also be just over 60% to 67% at the same time. And they have projected out for the next five to seven years. And they have projected out for the next five to seven years what those schools are going to look like. Yes, there's going to be increases, but we are nowhere near a danger zone at this point in time or in the next five years. And with that, I will wrap up my comments and just say thank you to my fellow commissioners. It has been an up and down, rough and tumble at times, but honest discussion is taking place, and that's probably the best thing we could do for this county, is have honest and open discussion, fight with each other, and then come to some resolution and move on with the business of Currituck County. Next up, we have the county managers' report. Back anything from you this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind you all of our holiday closures for the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday. Administrative offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, the 28th and 29th. And then the transfer station convenience site and both welcome centers, visitors centers, will be closed on Thursday, the 28th only. Also, wanted to get some feedback from you all on the concept of a floating holiday in lieu of the holiday luncheon that we typically hold for staff. The concept would be to give all full-time, permanent and permanent part-time employees, which are those who accrue leave on an annual basis, eight hours of straight time. That would be used within a year and would not roll over. And again, that would be in lieu of the holiday luncheon. And then we would give service awards at a board meeting or a work session. That would be up to you all's discretion.
How much would that cost the county doing the revolving holiday? Nothing, right?
That's correct.
And the luncheon roughly is?
Is approximately $5,000.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I mean, it saves money and, like you said, the house always wins. If you're a salaried employee, grind it out, that 90, getting paid for 80.
That's just you, Kevin.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
They're moved. Wait a minute, can I vote on that? Hold on, because I mean, I mean...
I make...
All seriousness, like, do I need to recuse myself because I'm a county employee?
Yeah, let's...
So, can I have a motion to recuse himself as he is a county employee?
Yeah.
So, moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, does Commissioner Etheridge need to recuse himself?
He's not a county employee.
Is his wife?
His wife is.
Oh, that's an interesting point.
We're all county employees.
I make a motion that we approve the floating holiday for county employees in lieu of the dinner, and it will not cost taxpayers any money. We'll be saving money because we won't be paying for the luncheon anymore.
All right.
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? All right, thank you. Anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. How about from our very quiet county attorney this evening?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Yep, all right, let's take a quick recess here, and then we'll jump into the meat of the reason we're here this evening. All right, folks, we could get back to the reason we're all here this evening, I think. It's not because you love us so much.
What he said, the consent agenda?
The consent agenda? All right, next up is old business. Item one, PB 24-19 Flora Farm Conditional Mixed Use Residential: Consideration and Action. And as everyone knows, this was continued for our November 4th, 2024 Commissioners' Meeting. We have dispensed with most of the action with this and closed public comment at this time, so it's really just down to questions and comments from the board and deliberation and a motion up or down, one way or the other. So, I'll open the floor to the board if there's questions, comments, thoughts, maybe that Jenny needs to cover that have come up in the last month or a rehash of anything.
Mr. Chairman, I just do want to make a comment if I could, just real quick. And going back to emails, phone calls, you know, stuff like that, I have read them all, and I think I've told everybody out there, too. Anytime we have decisions throughout this county and anything, please send that information, phone, stop me to go, start talking to me. I read them, I listened, and it does make a difference in the thought process and knowing what your thoughts are out there as constituents, because, you know, decisions for something or against something, you know, there might be something I've missed or something I'm not thinking about. So, all those emails and those comments, you know, does make me think and ponder what the, you know, what the thoughts are out there. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Sure. And I will say, you know, taking this extra time has, I think ultimately been beneficial. Look how many people turned out and emailed the board or called us and talked to us. And so, you know, there's nothing wrong with taking a little bit of time to make a decision so at least you can truly ponder that decision before you come to your vote, one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, I am prepared to make a motion, but I will give everyone who wants to have their say time to have their say.
I was going to say, piggyback what Mike said. I mean, I had a lot of people that sent emails, and there were some, you know, I mean, positive, negative, whatever. I mean, phone calls, and I had people ask questions and text messages. I was texting with somebody last night that doesn't even live anywhere near it in River's Edge, and I just asked them, I said, hey, what's your opinion on it? And, you know, just different things. So, like I said, it was something that the community did interact and comment on, which was a positive thing. Like you said, I mean, I heard negatives and I heard positives, and I heard, you know, flip the coin, I mean, like a paper, rock, scissors on some of it. But like I said, it was, you know, there was a lot of, I'm glad that people reached out. Like I said, it's, as Paul said, too, like you said, I mean, whatever we decide or whatever, I mean, that's, you know, what it is, but that's it on my end.
Owen, did you have anything?
Yeah, I've got more emails and comments about this particular subject than anything that I've gotten over my tenure on this board. Currituck has changed. I've watched it change over the years, and it's going to change. Folks, we can't stop growth. The only way to stop growth is to buy the land and put it in conservation, because our land, I farm, I see both sides of the equation. And when you've got an asset that's returning less than past book savings, the people that own that land, they're not going to hold on to it for just sentimental value, because they can look at it in terms of what it could do in the stock market and what they can do, because we all have assets hoping that we will pass those assets on at a greater degree than what we did from our parents. We want to try to help our children. But I can tell you this, if the commodity prices for corn and soybeans do not improve, you're going to see a lot more pressure put on landowners selling land, because if they're getting less than a 1% year return on their investment, they're going to look to sell because they're second and third generation removed from the last family member that farmed that land. And it's getting tougher, because the price of corn and soybeans is less today than it was four years ago, but inputs have doubled. And we're going to see that pressure, and it's not just in Currituck, it's all over this country. The farmer has got to get a decent return on their investment. I watched it, I was not here when the night the public hearing was held on it, but I have watched the tapes, and there were some things that were said in there about public safety, and I did take offense to some of that, because when I first came on this board, every rescue squad in this county was volunteered. And this county does care about public safety, because we have grown our EMS service to where we have an EMS squad within 10 minutes of most everybody on the mainland. Does that mean that there's not going to be times that it runs more than 10 minutes? No, because of just the nature of it. We have always funded public safety. We continue to fund public safety and add to it. But things are going to get tougher, I can tell you that, and we've got to look at how we can expand our commercial tax base to pay these taxes. Mr. Scott mentioned it, and we can't keep going on just on residential. We've got to do something to attract more commercial development. And the last thing I'll say is about the infrastructure. We got $17 million from the state of North Carolina to make the improvements in the sewer and water system, so that will be handled. And that's a user pay system, and that will not affect your property tax.
Thank you, sir. All right, anything further from the board?
Can I say one more thing, if you don't mind?
Yes. When, I don't even remember who it was, somebody said about the apartments in the county. There's actually, there's four, and I did some statistical data, off duty, not on the clock, I was off duty, but I have a computer that I have 24/7, so I just looked up at home, I can, you know, pull up the data, and they can forward where I pulled it off. But like I said, because I was curious, and it kind of floored me, and I'm not saying pro con, whatever, but it's like our biggest apartment complex, I guess, would be, I know there's some at Berry's and Grandi, and then there's some at University Plaza in Powell's Point.
Park.
Or University Park, thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. In the last three years, like, I would have thought we had way more law enforcement calls there. We've served a couple papers, some evictions, some subpoenas, stuff like that, your normal that you do everywhere, and a couple suspicious persons, one, somebody was out there doing work that was supposed to be there, but I'm surprised like at that. And granted, it's what, 42 or 46? How many apartments they have down there now at University Park?
I don't know.
It's 40-something, I think.
Right, they just did an expansion.
Yeah, but they're getting ready to add on to it. But like I said, I was surprised. It was like, it was single-digit in the last three years. And I mean, and it was like, you know, I mean, they have 911 hangups, somebody could be in the parking lot and butt dial 911 by accident, that's going to happen anywhere. But I would have thought it would have been more, and we actually, the apartments we have in Corolla, we get a lot of calls there. I mean, that's in the summertime, but, you know, and wild geese, we get some, that's a different type of, you know, we get a heavier volume of calls there sometimes as well. But I did look that up just out of curiosity, but two of them, I was surprised that we got as little as we did, and one of them, we really don't get anything. And then the other one, I was like, you know, like I said, so it's, I mean, like I said, there's pros and cons.
What are the number of units that compare?
Powell's Point has 40-some, so, which they are just expanding.
Got more than that in Powell's Point, because there's also Wild Geese Landing as well as University Park.
Yeah, which, I mean, that's a different than a rental.
Well, there's still apartments.
But I mean, it's subsidized, government-assisted funding. But like I said, there's, I think they have 60-some there, so if you count on the south end of the county, there's 100 and some.
Yeah, Neals Creek Apartments is not that many.
Neals Creek doesn't have many, but like 100, like I said, and I mean, like, I mean, the university, which I would consider, I mean, they're really nice, they're, I mean, they're custom everything, I mean, if anybody's ever been in there. We have had a couple deputies, EMTs and stuff rented in the past, and like I said, in the last three years.
And they're $2,300 more.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, Ms. Kitty.
If I remember correctly, we moved this agenda item to give the public an opportunity to let us know their concerns and also to gather more information to make a better decision. I've received numerous phone calls and I don't know how many emails, which, I'm sorry, but I didn't answer all of them, and only one person, one out of all these people were in favor of it, one. So, if we moved it to get the public comment, because we are supposed to do the will of the people, and I do understand about growth and I understand about farmers, because we own a small farm, and when we got our rent, it was like a big shock, and soybeans were a lot less than what they were last year. I mean, a lot less. So, it is putting pressure on farmers and other people, but we're not telling somebody they can't develop this. I mean, we're just saying it's not a place to put 200, what is it? 252 apartments. We don't have the infrastructure, we don't have, we just, we just need to pull back and wait a little while.
And I just want to put some numbers out there that I did today, calling two engineers, one a traffic engineer and the other an environmental engineer, both of whom are my sons. So, with this decision, we are combining the Flora tract into 224.43 acres, and that's going to take the density, as is in the agenda packet, from 1.37 to 2.49. But all 252 apartments are going on the 21.99 acres that are currently zoned commercial. That's a fill-like density of 11.459. Put your head around that density, 11.459 dwelling units per acre. Charlotte, North Carolina, our biggest city in the state, limits single-family town, single-family townhomes and homes to 10 dwelling units per acre. Wake County, the second-largest county in the state, an urban area, limits it to 8.7 dwelling units per acre. This is not the fill of Currituck. This is the fill of an urban, not a suburban area. Moyoc has a suburban fill to me now, which hurts my soul in many ways when I drive up there, but it is a suburban community. This is a fill-like density of 11 and 1/2 dwelling units per acre. It is not in harmony with Currituck County, and I would once again encourage the board to say no.
Thank you. All right, Owen, you going to make it?
He was coughing.
All right, I know you've got a little cough going.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, if no one else wants to speak, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to deny PB 24-19 Flora Farm Conditional Rezoning because the request is not consistent with the zoning map amendment review standards and the Unified Development Ordinance, including the fact that the rezoning is too dense in the Moyoc community and destroys the fill of the community. It adversely impacts nearby lands. It does not result in a logical or orderly development pattern and would result in development that is not adequately served by public facilities. And it is not consistent with the Imagine 2040, Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, specifically Land Use Plan 1.3, 1.5, 1.4, Land Use Goal Number Two, Infrastructure and County Service Policy 7.2, Infrastructure and County Goal Eight. And it is not reasonable nor in the public interest, because this change will further burden our schools, our services, our roads, and our taxpayers.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Nay.
All right, so we had three ayes, four nays. Motion does not pass. Do we have another motion? If no motion is going to be put forward, then I can move on to the agenda, and this can die for lack of a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 24-19 Flora Farm Conditional Rezoning because the request is in conformance with general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance, is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including Land Use Goal Number One, Land Use Plan 1.5, Future Land Use Plan Number One, Moyoc Land Use Policy 2.1, and the request is reasonable in the public interest because the size and location of the property is appropriate for the proposed use, and the request provides a needed housing alternative in the Moyoc sub... and the request provides a needed housing alternative in the Moayak subarea of the northern mainland. And I would like to also add the conditions of approval that conditions 1 through 4, as amended in the applicant's design package, be included in the, specifically in the phasing plan.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? There's no one that's coughing.
I'll second it.
We do have a second.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote on it, I'd like to ask why we moved this agenda item if we were not going to listen to what the public wanted. It makes no sense. We should have voted on it when it was first brought up.
I believe I said aye. I made that motion. Was, because I wanted to think about this, and I have, I've been all over the map on this, to be quite honest with you. And it gave the opportunity, public, more opportunity to reach out to us. It was, and that's it, so.
And how did they reach out to you? How many people were in favor of it?
We're here.
What about the 30,000 we didn't hear from?
We're here.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Was that four ayes? Owen, did you vote aye? Yes, much carries. All right. When you bought a house, you moved here.
Freak, y'all can come and clean it out. It's ridiculous.
We're going to build a apartment, you want my house? In my backyard?
How many more people do you need in the courthouse, Bob?
Not a good fit. Build it in Shawboro.
They already are. And we did. Actually, I did.
Just to reiterate what you said just a moment ago, you were all over the place, and you didn't know what to decide.
Yeah, it took me a lot of thought and.
I'm sure to sit in the chairman chair.
Yep.
You should have both known.
But I did come to a decision.
He don't care, he's with the builders. Let the builder change everything, everything that they promised us.
He didn't build me anything.
It canceled, you guys canceled.
Thank you. All right. Another contentious one on our way out. All right, next up, new business. Consideration for Approval Revised Site Plan and Building Elevations for Elizabeth City State University Hangar Facility at Maple Commerce Park. I'm guessing this is Jenny? Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, you did see some elevations and a site plan previously. There's been some changes to those. And the site plan, I believe, is close to receiving approval and permits from the state that are required. And I wanted to get the elevations in front of you because this is in the Maple Commerce Park, and there are restrictive covenants that require this board to approve the site plan and conceptual building elevations. And so this is the.
Hang on one second, Jenny.
You can't.
You can't.
It's an open meeting.
No, no, but they just don't think it moved down quietly, we can't shut the doors, but I just.
They're moving on.
Okay.
So this is the new iteration of the site plan that's proposed here. You can see they still have their office building, school building, as well as a maintenance hangar here. And then they've added this storage hangar adjacent to the proposed apron. And then this is the runway connection to the airport. Taxi, excuse me, taxi.
Taxway.
Taxway.
Hold on.
Hang on one second, Jenny.
Yeah, I guess you can't really.
Focus?
Use that as a runway.
Well, you could.
Might be a little dangerous.
You could. I had a student that tried to land on a taxiway in a C-130.
That's a lot of plane for a taxiway.
That is a lot of plane on a taxiway.
So that's the pretty minor change to the site plan. And I believe when they bid the project, there's going to be some alternates that have this storage building as an alternate. I can show you. This was the original plan that the board approved. You can see that the storage building wasn't here at that point. These are the alternates where the storage building that you see will be bid out, and then this other alternate for different paving plan. This is the new proposed elevation. That's probably kind of small for you, I can try to.
It's about the same as my computer.
Zoom in a little bit here. You can see that this, this is the north elevation. Previously, there was a shed-style roof. This is now a gable-style here. This front portion of the building still does have that shed style. Actually, they flattened out this roof here in the front. You can see the east elevation here is just a flat roof facade. In the south, it's gabled. And then on the west, yes, they do still have the shed style in the front and the flat roof in the rear. Now I'm just moving it around. All right, this was the original rendering. I don't have a new rendering for you, but this part of the building will still retain the shed-style roof. This one will have the pitched roof in the rear. And I think that's, that's all I have. Any questions?
I do. Not for you. These are like relatively minor type changes, right? Did these have, I mean, it's not, no sweat off of me, but do these have to come before us and why? I mean, is it, is there not, I mean, it's still within the same concept. It's still roughly in the same footprint. And, you know, how long did this take to work its way through the system? When, I don't think it's a substantive change, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, I get it, right?
Right.
But this type of.
I think it, does it have more to do with the being.
I think it's part of the restrictive covenants. Yeah, so it's required to be approved by the board, and that's just in the restrictive covenants for Maple Commerce Park. That's why it's before you.
Other than that, then, but they probably could if it was outside of that area.
Well, perhaps it's a future discussion for the next BOC.
Work session to, like, anyway.
Oh, wow.
Because a citizen can email us.
It just results in.
Meeting in December to discuss that.
Because it results in extra staff time, you know, I mean, whatever.
Which should be a simple, simple change, tweak.
Paul, you won't have to sit through it next time.
This is what I've said for years, flexibility.
Right.
All right, well, we'll have that discussion, you're right.
It's an ordinance requirement, this is coming to you, this is your restrictive covenant.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we probably need to have a conversation about the restricted covenant.
Or you need to have that conversation.
Allowing you guys some more ability to say, yeah, that's a minor change, you're good, go ahead.
And Mr. Chairman, absent any other questions, I move for approval.
Second.
All right, anything else from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up, consent agenda, whether comments, questions, or concerns on anything on the consent agenda this evening.
Negative.
Move for approval?
So, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, second.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.